Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, January 10th, 2024, and I would like to open the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable channel 8. If we could all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the righteous hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann to my left, who can have three minutes to make, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody have anything not on the agenda to discuss? Seeing none, okay, thank you. I would ask that public comments on each public hearing be held at the end of the presentation. I will reach out to the public and ask if there's anybody that has anything to say in reference to each and every hearing. Tonight, the first extended public hearing, or continued public hearing, will be myself, Sharon.
No, I'm not sitting.
Oh, you're not sitting. So it'll be myself, Billy, Jonathan. Why don't we just go George and Charlie? How's that? And then we'll just, the next one will be Brad. How's that? So it'll be this five right here. So that being said, Charlie, would you read the first continued public hearing?
Sure thing. Continued hearings for the date of January 10th, 2024. First on the list is 31 Birch Way. Owners Gary J. and Denise M. Nagel request a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction of an existing garage and porch addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 27, parcel 86, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from December 13th, 2023 hearings at the request of the board.
So one second, sir. Mary Ann, could you tell us the board why this was extended?
Yes. We just needed the plan, the values, and explanation on the drainage system.
Okay. Sir, go ahead.
How are you?
I'm great.
Mike cannot, yeah, we're here because you continued, because the plan, you wanted the dry wells that were requested shown on the engineering plan, and you wanted the, the square area recalc for the lot coverage percentages to reflect the BVW.
Sorry.
So those engineering plans, I believe you have, I also have a copy if you need them.
We do have drainage calculations, which are computerized, and I'm unable to check them, not saying that I have to, but...
Well, my engineer provided them for me. I have to assume he's an engineer. He knows what he's doing.
As, as I would too.
Yeah. I asked him, you know, what you asked of me, I asked of him, and this is what he produced for me.
And was there anything else? Did we continue for any other reason?
No, you had, the, there was some clarification on the BVW area calculation with respect to the lot coverage, so that was also corrected.
So lot coverage on the site plan has been amended?
Correct.
So...
Lot coverage on the site plan has been amended to be accurate, and the two dry wells requested are now shown on the engineering site plan.
So board members, we should look very closely at lot coverage to make sure that we understand and comply and agree with them.
Okay, so proposed is 17.8. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that includes what Evan had asked about, that portion of any bank that touches inland waters?
Yes, I went over this with Evan explicitly with the engineer this week to make sure he was clear, because he questioned it, and the engineer and him had a conversation directly, and he's satisfied.
Well, we'll, we'll read Evan's synopsis of his comments into the record. So at this point in time, I mean, in the future, we're going to have to change this lot coverage dissemination or how it's, you know, stated, but if Evan's okay with it, and he had a conversation with your engineer, I'm not, as one member, I'm not going to worry about it unless Evan has stated that he's still worried about it. All right, why don't we read, can we please have Evan's comments at this point so that we can understand what he has saying, and then any other letters from agencies? Read those into the record. We probably read them in the record last public hearing?
Yes.
Extended, yes.
Correct, you did.
Could I, could we reread Evan's comments, summarize, please?
Actually, what we have is, we have a series of, of emails between Evan and, and you were on?
Yeah.
Between...
I think he, Evan reached out to the applicant's engineer and amended the application further after the first go-round.
And the net result of those three different pieces of correspondence is January 5th, 2024. Nope, as I understand it, from Evan to Ron Bonby, relative to 31 Birch Way. And I'm, what I'm going to do is, actually, it's short enough so I can read the two paragraphs.
Yeah, that's all you need to do.
Yeah.
Just the bottom line, really.
I have notified the applicant that I missed a critical detail in my first review of this plan. While the applicant correctly and satisfactorily addressed all of the comments submitted at the opening of the public hearing, I noted in my review of the revised plan that in addition to the bordering vegetated wetland, BVW, on the site, there is also a significant portion that is inland bank. The portion of the lot that is inland bank may need to also be considered in the lot coverage calculated, Mash General Laws 131, Section 40 reads. Term freshwater wetlands as used in the section shall mean wet meadows, marshes, swamps, bogs, areas where groundwater flowing or standing surface water or ice provide a significant part of the supporting substrate for a plant community for at least five months of the year, emergent and submergent plant communities inland water, that portion of any bank which touches inland waters. If any portion of the inland bank shown on the plan touches the edge of the water of Mashpee Wakeby, all of that land area should be considered wetland for the purposes of calculating lot coverage. This really doesn't bear any impact on the project proposed, however. The Board of Appeals must consider the totality of nonconformities on the site. If the area of inland bank is removed, it seems likely that lot coverage is also pre-existing nonconformity, nonconforming. That nonconformity needs to be considered by the board in their findings and motion. I've asked the applicant to address this issue if necessary. Is that your understanding of the...
So that, that is the second to last email. There is one more subsequent to that after the engineer. I forwarded that to my engineer, and then my engineer had a correspond... And also, he had a conversation with Drew regarding how to classify the BVW and how to utilize it in this application. So Drew was also involved, and Evan was satisfied. So that last email is the one you have to, uh, still read.
The last that I have in the materials that I have is an email of January 8th, 2024, to Peter McEntee from Evan Lira.
He's the engineer.
Okay. And, IP. My concern relative to the bank is relative to lot coverage. Our bylaw requires that any wetland as defined in 131, Section 40, be removed. This includes resource areas such as LSCSF, and in this case, potentially the inland bank. The definition states that any portion of any bank which touches any inland waters is a wetland. As such, if any portion of the inland bank on the plan touches inland waters, then it is a wetland as defined and should not contribute to the denominator of the lot coverage calculation. If there is indeed a lot coverage nonconformity resulting from this technicality, and it is not considered in the deliberation and written decision, the Labor Appeals on the grounds lot coverage was inappropriately shown, then their case would be pretty straightforward. If the inland bank does not rise to meet the definition as cited above, then that is fine. There have been recent judgments subsequent to appeals. They have caused us to be very scrupulous as it comes to lot coverage calculations and the definitions discussed in 131, Section 40.
Thank you very much, Charlie.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
When the engineer went back and calculated it, did it change at all?
It did. It went up originally.
So the 17.8 was something prior to that lesson?
It was.
Okay, so I'm looking at a, the plans that were just passed out, and this has a revision date of 12/15 on the existing, and on the proposed, it's the same date. And the existing number changed. So is there something different after 12/15?
The...
That nobody's seeing here?
No, the, um, the lot coverage in the bottom left-hand corner are the amended values that have been changed. Other than that, the plan remains unchanged. It was only those value, percentage values that were changed.
So the existing, uh, excuse me, the existing conditions, the proposed was 17.8, and on the, excuse me, on the existing, 17.8, on the proposed, 17.48. So it went down.
No.
What, 17.48 to 17.8?
Right, from 17.4 to 17.8. I don't, I don't have what you're looking at. I have the most current version, which the existing as it stands is 16.7, and the proposed is 17.8. You might, you might have a, a copy that doesn't belong in there.
But something doesn't make sense.
I have one here that says existing conditions on this one. And then I have one that says proposed conditions.
Yep.
So I'm thinking that proposed...
Should go up.
Is the one...
Well, on the existing, on both, on both of those, on both of those, I have the same proposed and existing.
See where the confusion is?
I have more confusion than that. So the proposed is smaller, lot coverage-wise, than the existing. So my point is...
When we say existing, we mean existing prior to any work being done.
Yes.
So it's a little confusing. So yes, the proposed conditions and existing conditions are two separate, uh, two separate plants. Yep, correct. But in the bottom-left corner, it still says the existing. It's clarified in the bottom-left corner, existing 16.7 on both, on both copies of this, right? It's agreed?
Right.
And then the proposed is the same, because even though, even though on the existing conditions map, he just listed the proposed percentages in the bottom as well.
Let me ask you a question. I think I can clarify this. Did you submit at the last hearing, the top page, which would be existing condition sheet? That was, was that last meeting?
Yes, it was in both meetings. But the, but the corrections on the, on the bottom-left-hand corner of those percentages had not been made at the last meeting.
So here's what I don't get. Existing condition, front page,
Yep.
which you said you submitted at the last meeting,
Mm-hmm.
shows existing lot coverage of 16.7.
Yep.
And then it shows proposed at 17.8. Along comes Evan and this board, and we say, wait, you gotta, you cannot calculate, utilize in lot coverage, anything in 13140, any land subject to flood, et cetera.
So the last map that I...
Brought this map up.
To 17.4. That was where it was the last time.
No, 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 but you're saying last time was 17.8. That's the top page.
No, the newest version is 17.8. Final answer, 17.8 is the final coverage.
So that's the top page, which is stated existing. See, here's, here's why we're a little messed up.
You're saying existing and proposed.
Right.
That's what's...
We're really messed up, because if he showed on this, your engineer put it a revision date on the plan, because he didn't. We wouldn't know which page, page is revised and when what was revised. There's no revision on this.
No revision date?
Whenever you change a plan, per an engineer or, or Lancer Bear, they put revised and what they revised.
And a date?
Where, where is it? I'm loving that for this. Plan revision. Oh, you are correct, Mary Ann. Look at the top right.
Right, but look at both pages. It's the same date.
Yeah, he revised them both on the same date. So both, both the existing, both the existing and the proposed were inaccurate according to our last meeting.
Exactly.
Because of the BVW issue. So I brought that back to him, and he corrected it on both plans, proposed and existing. He corrected the math, doing, taking out that BVW land, which raised the percentage.
So what you're saying is correct. Think this through. How can the existing on both pages, when you remove any land subject to 13140, which is, which is, you know, it...
But it's not the same. The last plan I submitted was 17.4, if I'm going by recollection.
Look at existing. Let's pay attention. Bottom-left, existing.
Yep.
See, bottom-left, existing is what? 16.7?
Yep.
On both pages. Along comes Evan and this board, and we say, you cannot use even existing and proposed. You cannot use in your computation, land subject to coastal flowage or flooding, right? You cannot use that. So you take it out. Existing and proposed, you gotta take it out. So why is existing the same number before and after?
It's not supposed to be. It's supposed to be two separate plans.
You can't...
Before...
If you were 16.7 before we brought up the issue that you cannot utilize certain land in your computations, now we're talking existing, you gotta take that out in your existing calculations also. So 16.7 should be a larger number when we, when you take that land out. And then also, certainly proposed would be larger, but existing would be larger too.
So, but your concern is only with the proposed percentage. It's still under 20%.
We're concerned that the plan is not correct. That's the problem.
It's under 20%.
I get you. I'm not...
So it's compliant.
As one member, I'm not sitting here saying that I'm not going to move forward, although I'm a little, I'm concerned that the plan is incorrect. I'm trying to get you to the next point here and to get this thing moving.
I'd love to get to the next point.
But my concern is, is I just don't want a plan that I believe might be, or could be, or possibly is incorrect. Because if it was 16.7 the day you came here, two weeks ago, or a month ago, and then we said, Evan said, take the land subject to coastal flowage out, or...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say, okay, I'm just getting into his brain, right, for the purposes of this discussion, and he maybe have overlooked that number. And he, he said, okay, they're concerned about what the percentages are after we do this work, that we're under 20, so he redid the math.
That's what I think he...
I will buy into that partially. I get it. I get what you're saying.
I mean, if you want, I'm happy to do this for the board. If you would like, I can go back to him again and have him do the existing math, even though it won't matter after the project is done. It, it doesn't have any bearing, because neither one of those numbers are beyond the 20% mark. So, but for the case of accuracy, if that's what you're asking, I'm happy to bring into Mary Ann another copy that you can keep on file.
As one member, I'm okay with that. Have another question? Oh, I'm sorry.
The document should say, every time there's an update, you don't get rid of the old update date.
Hmm.
You leave that. You say new revision date, new revision date, so we can see the progression.
Well, he did, he did write the revision date on there. The revision date is there.
Yeah, where's the original?
Yeah. The chain isn't 100% correct.
The origi, well, I don't have that...
The original was wiped out when it was done.
Okay.
So in other words, it's supposed to...
Could I ask, Charlie, there's other things in the record. We may want to read any other... Do we need to read any of the other comments in the record, whether it be Board of Health comments? I just don't want to lose touch of any of these other letters, because we may have to condition, if we make a motion, we want to make sure we include it.
Okay, we, we have several. A Board of Health comments received 11/27/23 for 31 Birch Drive. Board of Health to remain three-bedroom. No issue there. Board of Health, Conservation Department comments received 1/4/2024, 31 Birch Way. This project was issued an order of conditions by the Conservation Commission. No issues or impacts to the inland bank associated with Mashpee Wakeby or the pond itself in terms of water quality.
Excuse me.
The...
DPW?
DPW from Catherine Laurent, 31 Birch Way. Birch Way is a town road, while no modifications to the existing paved driveway are proposed. Current storm runoff from the property flows to the road. At a minimum, I request that any approval be conditioned upon installation of gutters, downspouts, and dry wells on the new garage and porch to address the roof runoff.
As we've asked him to do, and he did.
That's correct. And that is the extent of what I have.
No letters from a better, but it's correct.
Right.
David, do you have anything to say or add to this application?
No, it's a pretty straightforward application.
Audience, do you have anything to say? Any input, any questions or effects of the application? I see none. My attitude would be as follows, to make a motion, I'm sorry, did you ask?
I was just going to say, I think if we, in the motion, include a requirement that the existing plan be updated just to have everything straightforward.
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem with that.
To your and David's satisfaction.
Yeah, I would recommend that the applicant's engineer should review existing conditions, 16.78%, 16.7% to make certain that that is the existing condition, taking into consideration that he cannot utilize any land subject to 13140, as Evan has pointed out. And if, he may be, he may be correct. It may remain the same. I don't know.
It, it's kind of a moot point, because the real important one is the proposed.
Correct. So Charlie, could you add that to the motion, please? If you were asked...
Let me, let me give you a draw run first.
There you go.
Condition upon the, the engineer for the applicant reviewing the plans and the property to confirm that the proposed, that the existing percentage conforms to the 16.7 set out in the plan.
Okay, and that takes into consideration...
And the proposed lot coverage.
You can add that, but, yeah, fine. And that, if it needs to be corrected, that it's submitted to David for approval prior to a building permit? And if it doesn't need to be corrected, he should state so in a letter to David prior to a building permit, application. So either way, I mean, if it has to be changed, she submits the plan to David, David can approve it. If in fact, it doesn't have to be changed, he puts in a letter to David, doesn't have to be changed, it's correct. It could be correct. I, I, it just doesn't make sense to me. It could be totally correct. I'm not an engineer, no professor of engineering.
No, and it's a difficult position for me, because I'm trying to get in his brain and, you know, figure out what he did and do his job for him, and I, you know, I don't know what he did. I just told him what I needed.
Do we need anything else included if, if you were asked to do a, a...
Let me see if I can make it as simple as I can make it.
Certainly.
Also conditioned upon the engineer for the applicant reviewing and confirming that the exist, that the, that the existing plan be updated to confirm that the 16.7% existing is correct and to confirm that figure to the building commissioner prior to the start of construction.
Perfectly. And if in fact it is incorrect, amend the plan.
Yep.
Okay, and we want to talk about the proposed too in there.
You can add that. I, I think the proposed is right, but I, you can add that if you want, surely. I think the proposed is correct. I think there was an error made in the, in the existing, but, you know what? I'm not an engineer. I think it makes sense. If Jonathan wants to add the... We want to make sure the proposed is also correct, so just add existing and proposed.
Yeah.
That way we can move this along.
I have no issues.
All right, anybody on this board have any other input, questions, or issues with this application?
None.
See none. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And get a motion to approve the application, please.
So moved. Second.
Wow, wait a minute. He's got to read it.
He's got to read it.
Okay.
I thought he read.
No, he's going to read, yeah. It's just one piece of it. All right. Small piece.
And make a motion relative to 31 Birch Way. Owners Gary J. and Denise M. Nagel request a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction of an existing garage and porch addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 27, parcel 86, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Laws 48, Section 6. Site plan, existing and proposed conditions. 31 Birch Way, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Gary and Denise Nagel. Scale one inch equals 20 feet, drawn by PTM, date 10/13/23. Sheet 2 of 2, prepared by Engineering Works Inc. and RAS Associates. Stamped and signed by Peter McEntee Civil, number 35109, and Stephen Cotright, number 37041. Revision date 12/15/23. One, show upland and wetland areas. Two, recalculate lot coverage. Three, add roof drains. Building plans, 31 Birch Way, prepared by JB Designs. Page 1 through 7, date 10/7/23, revised page 4 of 7. Proposed second-floor plan, date received 11/28/23. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Condition on the comments submitted by Catherine Laurent, DPW Director, dated November 29th, 2023. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Also conditioned upon a review and confirmation by the petitioner's engineer to, that the initial, that the existing plan be included and be updated to confirm that the 16.7 existing lot coverage of 3,065 square feet and proposed 17.8.
48 or 8?
17.48. Excuse me, that's the one underneath.
No, 17.8.
48, yes.
Yeah, the one at the top.
48 is the correct one.
17.8%.
3195 square feet.
Proposed 3195 square feet be confirmed, and confirmation of those figures be given in writing to the, the building commissioner. If there is any discrepancy between that confirmation and what is to be built, a new plan will be submitted to the building commissioner and to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second.
Can I just ask, but he doesn't have to come back to the board?
No, to the building commissioner.
Okay, good.
Right.
Because you say commission, then...
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, yeah.
All right, I'll second.
All's in favor. Are you, you have any left?
One more.
Good.
No. Number seven. The board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood. I think that covers...
Do I have a second? I'll second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys. You guys have a wonderful evening. Thanks, Dave.
Ready?
Charlie and Sharon.
I thought that was planned. Okay.
Got forms any out there?
Sign in the right place.
Yes, I will. Write your name.
So while we're doing that, the next people sitting will be the five regular members, and why don't we go with...
Four regulars.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Four and Bob, how's that?
Good.
Bob?
Bob's not here.
Not here.
I'm sorry, Brad. Sorry. I have a senior moment.
Don't we all?
Yeah.
Here we go.
All right, so that being said, Charlie, would you please read the next continued public hearing?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
The next continued hearing is 33 Sunset Circle. Owners Kevin and Suzanne C. Mulgrew, trustees of the 33 Sunset Circle Realty Trust, request a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction and extension of an existing deck to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 64, parcel 28, Mashpee, Mass., continued from December 13th, 2023.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone. Can I present you with the hard copies of the site plan?
So we have a question, she just said this to me. So the plans you're gonna give to us right now are not given to the board in time, is that correct?
So what, what happened is by mistake, he resend, reprint the same, uh, site plan copies that you had originally, and he changed it same day, send a digital copy, and I've been told to bring the hard copies to the hearing.
So the way I'd like to handle it, so this board knows that we have a cutoff of the Friday before the Wednesday meeting of all interaction between board and plans, et cetera.
Yeah.
The applicant did not meet that date.
Noon time on Friday.
So he did not meet that.
What time did it come in?
When did those plans, so he's given them to us right now?
So it was, the cutoff time was noon, and I believe it was sent a little bit afternoon.
When did you receive it, Mary Ann?
Digital copy.
It was about three o'clock.
Three o'clock on Friday. Friday, is that correct? So it's set at noon time Friday, three o'clock Friday, it's up to the board. Your call.
I have no problem with three o'clock Friday.
Jonathan?
I don't have a problem.
Okay, so, um, you have a problem, Brad?
It just makes it a little difficult for Mary Ann.
All right. Yeah, and, and also the board has not really, you know, reviewed them, but we'll just take our time now. Don't do it again.
Yeah, I know, sorry about that.
No problem. We only have two, Adam or do you have?
I gave three, I can give you one more.
Uh, that would be great if you could, because that means only the board has two. There you go, I do not have one, which is fine. I only have the old one. Here you go, Brad. So, sir, if you'd like to present?
Yeah, so we had, um, similar issue with the lot coverage, so the new plan presents, um, lot coverage excluding B V W. And also, the second issue was the setbacks wasn't marked on the plan, rear setbacks.
And you've corrected both of those issues in the plan?
Yep. So on the left side, um, of the page, he actually recalculated existing lot coverage. Originally, it was like twelve percent, right now it's six point three, sixteen point three. And then with the deck on, uh, the proposed lot coverage would be seventeen point six excluding B V W.
And I presume he put a revision date on the plan?
Yes, it's, uh, one fifteen, uh, one five, I'm sorry, one five. One, one four twenty-four.
Do you have any other thing to say?
I think that was the only issue with that project.
Do you? The comments are not too extended, so I can read the whole thing.
I'll leave that up to you, Charlie.
Uh, January fifth, two thousand twenty-four, um, correspondence from Evan to, to Ron Bondi. Thirty-three Sunset Circle, continued hearing. Unfortunately, the applicant did not amend this plan as suggested by my last comments to you. It does not appear that the revised plan removes the portions of the site that a water or wetlands is defined by Mass General Laws one thirty-one forty. Plan needs to identify the total land area that is water or wetland as defined in the above cited section, and utilize only that portion of the site, excuse me, the supplant for the purposes of calculating lot coverage. The Z B A needs to determine the total extent of any non-conforming aspect of the project. This requires a thorough presentation of the site's existing conditions in relation to the requirements of the zoning bylaw. We are still unable to have confidence in the accuracy of the lot coverage calculations shown on the plan. I will reach out to the applicant directly to address this. My assumption is that after that.
Yes.
The new plan was sent to Evan?
Yeah, the new plan was submitted digitally, and then the hard copies, that's where I brought.
Do we have anything from the town plan or correcting or making a prior, or a superseding statement about that issue?
I don't.
That's concerning.
So all we have is the indication of Evan that something needed to be looked at again and corrected, and we have the new plan coming in.
So I presume this happened because of the late filing of the plan, is that correct?
Well, the plans that had been given by land engineer, I submitted it on the third, and then you found that it was incorrect, and on the fourth, um, no, I'm sorry, on the fifth, you sent that email, uh, which he made the corrections, and then did the calculation.
So Evan has not seen this plan to state whether it's correct or not correct.
Well, Ron, this is pretty simple, because Evan's comments are dated January fifth. This has a last.
Yeah.
Revision.
Revision date of January fourth.
We're looking for additional comments correcting or stating something contrary to what Evan's on record of right now, which is?
We don't have it.
We don't have it. That's what I was, that's what I was getting to, yes.
That was probably because of.
Yeah, so I, I, as the chair, I'm not willing to move forward at this point unless Evan has seen these plans and reacted to them.
I agree. Why don't we continue this?
Yeah. Um, I, I, I think, you know, lot coverage is a very important aspect, uh, we've been remanded once, and we're not gonna hopefully get remanded, well, we probably will get remanded, but we're gonna do everything we can to stay away from that remand, so.
Yep.
We're gonna put our time and effort into, to make this right.
May I ask a question too?
Sure.
Okay, relative to, um, Evan's, um, not request, but suggestion, um, that if this requires a thorough presentation of the site's existing conditions in relation to the requirements of the zoning bylaw, is there anything else that we need from the applicant in order to fulfill that?
Well, I'm hearing from the applicant that the only, only reason this was extended was lot coverage.
Lot coverage plus the setbacks wasn't shown on the plan.
And what concerns me is, is I've said to this board that we need to listen to Evan the town planner, we don't need to always follow his recommendations, but when we have a town, um, agency such as the town planner saying, hey, I'm concerned about this lot coverage, and, and we don't have a letter or something saying, I'm okay with it, I'm concerned about that.
Just to separate the two, as far as the setback, we don't need any further information relative to setback than what we have, is that correct?
I don't believe we need more information, but I'll leave that up to Evan, once Evan looks at this, re-looks at this, he may come up with some more questions of the applicant's engineer or the applicant. That's why I think the gray area needs to be, um, filled in and has to be.
Coverage, yep.
Yeah.
Totally agree.
The only other possibility was conservation, because they're extending closer to wetlands, and conservation is already commented.
Yeah. So do we want to, why don't we go to the next level, read some, so conservation, why don't we read some letters in, we've already read the mid of the record, why don't we reread them and make sure the applicant doesn't need to do anything else?
All right, first, uh, Conservation Department comments received one four, two thousand twenty-four. This project was issued in honor of conditions by the Conservation Commission with a requirement for mitigation plantings due to the encroachment closer to the wetland inland bank associated with John's Pond. Project will not adversely impact any of the performance standards for inland bank or John's Pond itself, and will result in an enhanced naturally vegetated buffer strip between the developed portion of the lot and wetland resource area. Board of Health, uh, there is nothing received from Board of Health. And that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, the rest, Board of Health, it's on page two.
Oh.
Thirty, we're talking thirty-three Sunset, am I in the right?
Yep.
Yeah, it says, Board of Health, no habitable space, no comment.
Oh, gotcha, all right, yep. That's it. David, do you have anything in reference to this application?
I have no issues with them.
Okay. Audience, have any participation or any input in this? See no one. So at this point, I think it makes sense to hear from Evan in reference to the application. It seems to me it's the only thing we've got out there, I think.
But isn't it the twenty percent, um, that you was looking for, to be under twenty percent, which we are?
We don't know that for sure. Because the plan is not correct.
Evan has not.
As far as we know.
Stated his opinion of your new plan. He's on record stating that he's concerned about your old plan.
Okay.
And so until we get something from him that says he's happy with the new plan or some comments on the new plan, um, I'm not comfortable going forward. I think what pitched it was, if you submitted the plan in time, and I'm not trying to be trite or idiot about this, I'm just saying that he probably would have had time to react to it, and would have everything we need. So this is kind of the things that happen in this scenario, so. At this point, I'm asking you for an extension unless you want this board to vote. I don't think you want to do that, but that's up to you, you have a right to that.
Yeah, let's, let's do the extension.
And when, when should he ask for extension?
The next hearing is January twenty-fourth.
So you're looking at January twenty-fourth, sir? Okay?
Okay.
So you're asking for an extension till January twenty-fourth?
Yes, please.
I'd like to get a motion to, uh, to, um, concur with the. Say again?
Close the hearing.
What if Evan comes back with some problems or issues? No, we don't want it. So I'd like to get, um, a, um, motion to accept the applicant's request for an extension till January twenty-fourth. Do I get that motion?
Okay, relative to thirty-three Sunset Circle, um, a motion to accept the request of the applicant to continue the hearing from today's date to January twenty-fourth.
Second, I would like to get a second on that, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have any other paperwork, please?
They don't get their act.
We what?
Olding.
Olding. Is this it? Old?
Oh, no, more.
More, 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 more.
Absolutely.
That's it?
Think so.
Okay. All right, so sitting next will be the four regular members. Last one was Brad, why don't we start with you, George, and then we'll go next with Charlie, how's that? So it'll be the, the four regular along with George. Charlie, would you like to read the first new public hearing, please?
Okay, uh, just to make sure, uh, it's eighteen, uh, Neshova Road?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. New hearings, relative to January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Eighteen Neshova Road, owner, Ilia Illen, requests a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for a three hundred and sixty square foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located. The lots of water and wetlands where forty thousand square feet is required. A portion of the existing deck located in the southeast corner is within the fifty-foot setback from water and wetlands. The board will determine if the proposed addition is or is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
Okay, thank you. If you could state your name?
Ilia, Ilia Illen. So, um, basically, there's a situation that I'm trying to extend the house, uh, through the building of the addition to the house.
Are you the, I'm sorry.
I'm the owner of the, of the house, yes. And, um, uh, there were requirement to go through the conservation, uh, that was completed. And at this point, uh, I guess the question is, is, uh, the entire lot in the flood zone or just, uh, the lot partially covered by the flood zone? The surveyor, uh, who completed the plan indicated that the entire lot is in the flood zone, and therefore, uh, the percentages of the coverage is still valid, so it's not possible to calculate, uh, percentage of the coverage, which would be, uh, out of the flood zone versus the flood zone, because the entire, uh, lot is in the flood zone in his opinion. And, um, the new construction is going to be built on a post foundation, uh, as required, uh, by the building code for the flood zone and hazard zone, uh, areas, and, uh, that's basically the case. So, uh, the question was, uh, that, um, you know, the lot coverage, uh, indicated on the plan, is it correct lot coverage or incorrect? And, uh, the surveyor's opinion is because the entire lot is in the flood zone, so the plan is still valid, so the new plan wasn't submitted.
So just for clarity, the entire lots in the flood plain, which would make it a hundred percent lot coverage?
Correct.
Yep.
So your plan depicts thirteen point oh seven percent proposed, existing eleven point four seven, both of those probably should depict one hundred percent.
They're both at one hundred percent, but he, he's depicting them under the old way.
Yeah, so this, if he stated structure coverage, it may make some sense, but lot coverage, when you, so the plan is incorrect.
It's stated incorrectly.
Yeah, it is stated incorrectly.
Yep.
All right, um, all right, why don't we move forward and see where we get to on this? So that being said, do you have anything else to say, sir?
No, I think that's it, I wish you'd have any questions.
Okay, so, um, why don't we read letters from agencies, Evan, et cetera, and go from there?
Okay, Board of Health, um, uh, no increase in flow, no new bedrooms. Conservation Department comments received one four twenty-four. This project was issued a negative determination by the Conservation Commission, which means it has negligible impacts on any wetland values, thus, it does not need conditioning under the Wetlands Protection Act, and may proceed without any additional permitting or oversight of the Conservation Commission. I think I've already got the Board of Health, no increase in flow, no new bedrooms.
Yep.
And we have the letter from John Doyle, the engineer, uh, which the applicant had just spoken, should I?
Yeah, I'd like to read, so if the whole lot is in the flood plain, conservation is saying there's no impact.
Right.
So this.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, why don't you read, if you, could you read that letter, please?
Yeah, I'll read the letter. This is a letter, uh, dated, uh, well, I'm, I'm not quite sure on the date, but it's sometime around January, beginning of January two thousand and twenty-four. Dear Mr. Chairperson, I have performed land survey work and prepared a plot plan for Mr. Ilia Illen of eighteen Neshova Road in Mashpee for the purposes of obtaining a permit to construct an addition to the existing dwelling. As a result of my survey and calculations, I have found that the subject property is entirely within the hazardous flood zone, A E twelve, and therefore, the existing dwelling and the proposed addition do and shall be one hundred percent in this hazard zone. The FEMA reference map for this area is number twenty-five oh oh one, C O seven six one J, with an effective date of seven sixteen fourteen. Please feel free to contact me with any further questions. Thank you for your attention on this matter, very truly yours, uh, John P. Doyle, P O S.
I wonder if Conservation is aware of this. I don't know, it's, um, I guess I'm trying to comprehend this all.
All right, let me go backwards here. Conservation was received one four. There's no date on this. Two thousand twenty-four.
It's, it's amazing that a letter from a surveyor doesn't have a date.
The email has date that was attached, it was dated a month, and this is the fourth.
Yeah, but I've got.
I think it, it looks to be at about the same time. Conservation issued, they're okay, but it's not clear whether Mr. Doyle's letter was in the hands of Conservation.
Do we have anything from Evan?
Don't have anything.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We do?
Oh.
Same deal. Yeah, let me get to that. That's, that was a longer one.
It's a pretty long and involved one.
Synopsis would be great. Um, well, if you want to read the whole, if the board wants to read the whole thing.
She has a recommendation.
Sounds good. Go ahead.
Do you have it right there?
Yeah, I have it right here. The planning department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and the board can grant a written finding. Please be mindful of the potential lot coverage. lot coverage nonconformity and ensure, if it exists, that the nonconformity is considered in your deliberations and motions.
Again, this was before this letter.
Do we have any depiction of the building itself? I just see a site plan. Do we have elevations or anything of the plan?
Uh, yes.
Trying to understand how he's going to build, what his plans on building in the flood zone.
Well, if I can just say something. The flood plain does have, it has spot elevations, and there's one at 12. So that's at the flood zone. Every other one of them is below it. So I suppose that he could, he could claim that it is 100% in the flood zone. For me, it's, it's a building, it's a lateral addition that is not, it's prefirm, it is not, it is not a substantial, substantial improvement. So it's very easy for me to give a building permit for this project.
We have some, we have some additional...
They have no impact on the house.
We've got some additional information in the beginning of Evan's letter, though.
Yeah, there is.
Okay, and let me... Subject property is improved with a lawful pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling in the South Cape Beach Estate subdivision. The subject lot contains 11,550 square feet of land area, inclusive of both the upland and wetland portions of the site, where 40,000 square feet is required. Further, the lot contains 105 feet of frontage where 150 feet is required. It is unclear from the plan how much of the site is within the flood zone AE. The ZBA should ask the applicant's engineer what the total area of the site within the flood zone is for purposes of accurately determining the existing and proposed lot coverage.
So they do not have this left?
So Evan's unaware.
They do not have this left.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Evan.
And he goes on to say that the lot coverage shown on the plan do not appear to consider that portion of the site in the flood zone, which is a wetland as defined by Mass General Laws 13140. Dons and vote consider the entire scope of the nonconforming nature of the subject to property. Based on the image showing the delineated boundaries of the flood zone below, it's obvious that in addition to lot area and frontage nonconformities, the property has lot coverage and setback to water and wetlands nonconformities. Applicant has indicated to the ZBA Administrator's Secretary that determining this and delineating on the plan isn't possible. I disagree and ask the applicant to amend their plan accordingly. The applicant does cite a 2014 flood map and states that the site is within flood zone. AE, however, the extent to which it sits in the flood zone remains unclear. Further, the flood plain zone overlay cites flood insurance rate maps updated July 6, 2021. Applicant submitted a letter indicating the entirety of the site is in the flood zone. If that is the case, then the plan should indicate so and calculate lot coverage accordingly. Absent these technical issues relative to the plan's notifications, Planning Department foresees no substantive issues relative to the request to continue, extend, or alter the pre-existing nonconformities currently present on the site. With the exception of the setback to water and wetlands, all other setbacks, side, front, and rear conform with the requirements of the bylaw. The plan proposes a 24-by-15-foot addition to the west of the existing home. This will increase the lot coverage by structures modestly. Please consider in your deliberations the following pre-existing nonconformities: minimum lot area, minimum frontage, setback to water and wetlands, and lot coverage.
He doesn't send his wetlands hatch.
All right, well, why don't we, why don't we just continue down the following route? So David, do you have anything else to say?
Um, no, I just, you know, I just said, basically, it is easy for me to, to issue a permit. I would just need stamped foundation plan and first floor elevation, which the house is 14.7, so that would be, it seems like it's straightforward for me to issue a permit. I don't think it'd be that difficult.
Anybody in the audience like to ask any questions or make any statements about the application? All right. All right, well, so board, how do you want to proceed? I'm concerned as, I presume the rest of the board is in reference to the plan being correct. Is there any... So we went to Conservation, got a negative determination of applicability, correct?
Right.
Is there wetlands on the plan, or is that because of the flood zone?
Because of the flood zone.
I still think that certainly the plan needs to be amended.
I agree.
The question is, is how do we want to proceed? I think you should come back.
My real concern is that Conservation probably is not really aware of that letter.
I get you.
I don't know if that affects their decision. And I hear what David says. It's at 14 feet.
From me, I'm not going to worry about Conservation as far as what they know or don't know, what they've been told. It's up to you. You can, we can proceed down that road. For me, though, I think the plan needs to be corrected. I mean, it's depicting lot coverage right now of 11.47 existing and 13.07, you know, proposed.
Let's ask the applicant. Did you know whether the letter from the engineer Doyle was given to the Conservation Commission?
The Conservation meeting was before the letter from the engineer.
Okay.
Well, that itself is a problem.
I think, my opinion, the letter needs...
I concur with you then, Jonathan.
I'm sorry. I think the letter needs to be reissued, sent to Conservation, and dated. Right now, it's...
Conservation, get back to us.
Well, I think so.
I know it has a date on the email that it was attached to, but...
That should be done, and you should also, this, this plan that you've done has to be redrafted with a revision correctly stating lot coverage pre-existing, existing and proposed.
Existing and proposed, structure coverage and lot coverage. Structure coverage being what it was, and lot coverage being 100 and 100.
So what you have as lot coverage is structure coverage?
Okay, so the word lot, I should substitute to the word structure.
Right. If this whole lot is in flood zone...
Yes, that's an assumption.
So if that's correct assumption, number one, Conservation has to be aware of that. Maybe they already are, I don't know. But number two, this board's, the plan submitted to this board needs to be revised. It states the following. You, we, we're now trying to do the following. Structure coverage, which is how much of this building covers the lot. Take, don't even think about flood plain or 13140, pre and proposed.
Okay, so this is existing structure.
Then lot coverage will be 100% pre, 100% proposed. 100% lot coverage. If in fact the whole lot is in the flood plain.
It is.
I, I mean, it seems like the letter from your surveyor states that it is. If that's correct...
Yes.
Then your proposed and existing lot coverage will be 100%. So it's pre-existing, nonconforming. Fine. Then the board would like to also see the following. Structure coverage, which might be probably 11.47 existing, and proposed structure coverage, which will probably be 13.07.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah. So would you like to extend or ask for an extended, a continuous? Or would you like this board to vote? I don't think you want to do that.
As you say. So I need to submit the updated plan like that, right? With two additional lines regarding the lot coverage 100% and existing structure and proposed structure coverage. That's understood. Then I need to send this letter, or he needs to send this letter to Conservation with a date on it, right?
To Conservation stating, and they, Conservation may be already aware of this.
Okay.
No problem. We just want to make sure that they are aware of it.
We want to hear from them.
Yes.
Okay, and then I just need to hear back from you, or I need to check?
You need to come back. If you ask for an extension and we extend, you will come back. And on the settling of all those issues, this board will then vote. I'm not hearing anything else that this board's concerned about. There could be something else. I'm not hearing anything? It sounds like you'll probably be okay, but I'm only one member of a five-member board.
Yep, okay.
So when is the next, is it January 24th? Would you like, is it getting a long meeting? What do you want to do? Continuance until March 13th. Am I correct?
Yep.
So can I get a motion to accept the applicant's request for an extension, please?
Okay, a motion relative to 18 Neshova Road. The applicant has requested that the time for hearing before the zoning board of appeals be continued to March 13th, 2024 from today's date.
Second.
All those are favored.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Paperwork, any paperwork, please?
Send it down.
Okay. So next hearing will be the four regular members. George, were you on this one?
I was on this one, yes.
Okay, so it'll be Charlie. So it'll be the four regular members and Charlie. Charlie, could you please read the next hearing, which is 279 Monomuscoy?
Okay, uh, okay. Here we go.
No Chris today.
No.
No Chris.
All right. 279 Monomuscoy Road. The owners, Patrick J. Dale and Rickard A. Canole. Trust if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Canole?
Yes.
Trustees of the 366 CS Realty Trust, request a special permit under 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing nonconforming three-bedroom dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling with a detached garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 120 parcel 37, Mashpee, Mass. The existing property has the following pre-existing nonconformities: lot area, setback to water and wetlands, lot coverage and minimum side yard setback southwesterly. The entirety of the subject lot is located in the flood zone. The subject lot size is 15,982 square feet, inclusive of water and wetlands where 40,000 square feet is required. The existing structure is within the 50-foot setback to water and wetlands noting approximately 26.2 feet to the coastal bank. The lot currently consists of structures totaling 1,587 square feet, covering 9.9% of the lot when including water and wetlands. The applicant proposes replacement structures totaling 2,932 square feet and 18.4% proposed lot coverage, inclusive of water and wetlands. The board will determine whether or not the proposed replacement dwelling and garage has adequate parking, that any nonconforming aspects of the replacement dwelling are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and that there are no new nonconformities being created.
Okay, if you could give your name and your role in this application, please?
Of course, thank you very much. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm in Falmouth, and I'm here tonight with Patrick Dale, the applicant in this matter. Mr. Dale is the owner of 279 Monomuscoy Road, and he seeks permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling and structure. This property is on a lot of just shy of 16,000 square feet. It's in a residential three zoning district, and the entirety of the lot is within the AE11 flood zone. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a detached shed, total footprint of 1,587 square feet. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and the shed is over 120 square feet and is also therefore nonconforming. There are a number of nonconforming setbacks. The shed is nonconforming to front yard setback at 17 and 1/2 feet where 40 is required. The side yard setback to the shed is .6 feet where 15 is required. The house is also nonconforming to the setback to the wetlands being 26.2 feet where 50 is required. The lot itself is undersized by current standards. The applicant recently purchased this property seeking to construct a new year-round home. He's a local business owner with Dale Tree Movers and Tree Farm. Given the location in the flood zone, the scope of repair is really necessitate compliance with the flood zones being a substantial improvement, which require elevation of the structure. So they're seeking to raise it and rebuild compliant with those requirements, which would include all habitable space mechanicals being one foot above the flood zone elevation. Pursuant to 17417.1, pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling structures can be changed by special permit provided not more substantially detrimental than existing. The proposed dwelling maintains the same number of bedrooms as the existing, however, features a new denitrification system, and the existing nonconformities are all improved. The shed will be replaced with a new barn structure. The side yard setback will be improved .6 feet to 10 feet. The front yard setback's improved to 18 and 1/2 feet, and the rear yard setback to the wetlands improved to 28.8 feet. And perhaps most importantly, it will comply with FEMA regulations. There is a unique aspect to this application. The applicant's proposing to utilize the area within the foundation for additional flood storage capacity. So the proposed foundation will incorporate flood vents in order to reduce hydrostatic pressure in the, in the event of a flood, but also is proposing to fill the interior of the foundation floor with crushed stone rather than impervious floor in order to provide flood storage capacity in that event. The standard under 2, under 17417.1 is, is what's being proposed substantially more detrimental than what exists. Here, there's no new nonconformities created, and as noted, all existing nonconforming setbacks are improved. Further, the density on the site is unchanged. There's no increase in the number of bedrooms. We're replacing an aged septic system with a new denitrification system. The wildlife habitat will be improved, as it includes substantial mitigation planting and removal of existing invasives and lawn. The construction methodology will meet current building and stretch codes, and the house will meet flood zone requirements, eliminating an existing cinder block foundation. It will also better control drainage on the site. The current home has no roof collection with proposed appropriate gutters with distribution to dry wells. So it's all entirely within the lot, within the flood zone.
Right.
So the lot covered, you can't divide by zero because there's no...
Yeah, so what you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, lot coverage excluding water wetlands is defined on a Mass General Law 13140, 9.9 before, 18.4 after, is in fact not taking into effect fact that it's in a flood plain.
So that's, that's including the area within the flood zone.
Exactly.
Yes.
And then the one below that, which says you cannot divide by zero, what he meant by that is, that is in, is, is taking land in 13140 out of his computation.
Exactly.
All right, so it's just a different way of stating it, but I think he did it correctly.
I think he did too.
The applicant worked very closely with Evan in order to make sure that we reflected this appropriately on the plan.
It's just, it's a little bit different in its statement, but I believe it, I believe that the nomenclature is different.
The end result, I think, is the same.
Exactly, that's my point. So I just wanted to get that on the record, right?
Of course.
I totally agree. I think that works perfectly.
All right, so board questions at this point? No, actually, letters from agencies. Charlie, could you read letters, please?
Board of Health, office on first floor meets definition of a bedroom. New IA septic must be designed to accommodate four bedrooms.
And I believe this plan is an AI system, correct?
That was revised.
Yep.
And it's a six, we have a six-foot cased opening now on there, so it's not a bedroom on the first floor.
On the plan.
Yes.
And the email from Catherine Laurent, January 8, 2024, 279 Monomuscoy Road. Monomuscoy Road is a town road. Because of the new construction proposed, a curb cut permit from DPW will be required so that the driveway can be brought into compliance with the regulations. And we have the review of the matter by the town planner, by Evan, which I don't need to go through the whole thing.
I'd go to the recommendations.
Go to, go to the end. It is my opinion that the ZBA can approve this request as presented if it is found that the proposed site improvements will not result in a detriment to the neighborhood, that there are no new nonconformities being created, and that there is adequate parking. Given that the density on the site is unchanged, we can't reasonably state that the project would result in an impact to surface or groundwater quality that exceeds what exists today. Wildlife habitat will be approved by the removal of existing invasive species. Wildlife habitat will be approved by the removal of existing invasive species and substantial mitigation plantings. We can't reasonably state that there would be a detriment to traffic flow or traffic safety, waterways, fisheries, and fisheries given the density of the site is not proposed to increase. I believe the board could find that the proposed replacement dwelling and barn is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the request for a special permit could be approved. The applicant has thoughtfully addressed the many concern raised in recent years relative to structural expansions in the flood plain. Please consider in your deliberations the following. Minimum lot area, minimum frontage, setback to water and wetlands, lot coverage, side yard setback southeasterly, front yard setback. As recommendation recommends the board, if able to affirm the benefits asserted by the applicant relative to utilizing area within the foundation walls to increase flood storage capacity, find that the proposed replacement dwelling and barn are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously and approve the request of special permit. And...
Any other letters?
That's it.
No, no Board Health, no...
You read conservation, right?
Board of Health, the office...
Yeah, you read that already, I'm sorry.
They addressed that.
Yep, and that's it.
No conservation?
Do you have it?
This conservation, yeah.
I got it.
Yep.
Okay, 279 Monomoskoye Road. Project is scheduled for review by the Conservation Commission on January 11th. In the opinion of the conservation agent, the project does involve additional structure from what's existing. However, with a substantial amount of mitigation proposed to offset an increase in structure on a property that has no naturally vegetated buffer strip between the home and the coastal bank land under ocean, additionally, the upgrade of the septic system to an IA system, removal of invasive plants and replacement with native species and providing flood storage capacity in the crawl space under the proposed home should help to improve site conditions overall in terms of wetland values and reduction of impacts to water quality. Overall, this results in a net environmental benefit over existing conditions on the lot. It is important to note that the majority of this property is previously legally altered with little or no natural vegetation left.
Okay, David, what are your thoughts, please?
I met with the applicant as well, with Evan, and they did seem to, they addressed every issue, every concern that we had, and with the, and every complexity of the project. So it's up to the board.
Anybody in the audience having to say for this application? Yes, sir. Please come up, state your name, address, please. If you can.
Give him a mic.
Give him a mic, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jacque Moran, Levin-Hamlin Road in Mashpee. I am the direct butter to Mr. Dale and the subject property with the small-town way to water in between. I'm here, and my wife, both myself and my wife fully support their application before you. Having served in the similar capacity on zoning board on the Cape, I understand your constraints, and part of which would be determining whether or not it is a detriment to the neighborhood. I can't really see how it would be, particularly in that the goal, or many goals of the town are to clean up the nitrates in the embayments in the rivers and so forth. And Mr. Dale is proposing an IA system. If that didn't exist, or if that wasn't going to be replaced, this system currently in place would continue to do what we don't want it to do, which is nothing essentially as a Title V system. The property itself has served many a family over the years, but quite frankly, it has met its economic livelihood. There is, like the home that I had to rebuild, zero insulation. It was cute, and kind of was sorry to take it down, but you just couldn't live in it year-round. And with today's construction standards, energy-efficient codes, it just seems the way to go today to replace this, so that you could have the standards that are required now under the code. Notwithstanding that, there would be a significant obvious increase in valuation to the town, and we all know there's limitation to the town by two and a half and new growth. And the town, quite frankly, needs it to accomplish their goal of denitrifying the embayments through the new septic systems, the infrastructure that's required for that. So I think that anything in that regard would also go away. But the house is very nicely designed, and I hope that the board would give it positive consideration for approval. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah.
All right, so that being said, move on out to the audience. How does this board want to handle, let's say, conservation? They have not heard the application yet, but you heard what Drew sent. How do you want to proceed?
I have initial concern that they had not heard this yet, but after reading what, or hearing what Drew had to say, I feel very confident that conservation's going to go forward with this. I agree with Bill. I've got a question, I'm a little confused on these plans. I've got four of them here, and I see one that says existing. It's a house, a deck, and I see, if we're looking from either Monomoskoye or Hamlin Road, to the left, which would be, maybe the south, it shows a setback from the sideline of 10.9. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's existing, 10.9.
But there's a house. Yeah, there's an existing setback to the shed.
That's the closest part.
The shed has a setback of .6 feet.
Yeah, but does the shed really count?
It's over 120 square feet, so, and the town planner indicated that being over 120 square feet, it would remain as a non-conformity, and that would be the, under chapter 48, section 6, that's the setback that we work off of.
It's existing non-conforming.
Right.
The shed is.
So the shed's the closest structure.
Yeah. Per the bylaw, sheds under 120 square feet are exempt from setback requirements. Over 120 square feet are subject to them. Therefore, the .6 would be the closest point.
And it's pre-existing non-conforming.
It is, and it's being improved to 10 feet.
Okay. That answers that.
So Sharon, what do you feel about conservation?
I think we can condition this as long as we get a positive response.
I think it would be conditioned anyway. You wouldn't give a building permit if conservation...
What did I say was sitting, Mr. Charlie? You say, what are your thoughts, Charlie?
I think it appears as though the Conservation Commission is aware of all that's going to be going on in conservation. So if we make a condition upon approval by the Conservation Commission...
And clearly, the motion would have to include something to the effect that if there's any change to the plans, we have to come back.
Yep, right.
All right. I'll look at my checklist, I see nothing at this point that's left. All right, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing then, please? Oh, I went out to the audience. Pretty sure I went out to the audience, didn't I?
Anybody else?
Well, it's the audience, they went to Dave, went to the board, there's no one else in the room. We can go to the TV. All right, I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing, please. Second?
A second.
All in fair.
Right.
All right. So I'd like to get a motion to, for the application.
Motion relative to 279 Monomoskoye Road. Owners, Patrick J. Dale and Rickard A. Canole. Trustees of the 366 CS Realty Trust, request a special permit under 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming three-bedroom dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling with a detached garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 120 parcel 37, Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. One, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws 48, section 9. Two, site plan, existing conditions plan, scale 1 inch equals 10 feet, date 11/30/2023, drawn by JDR. Revision date 01/01/24. Revision date 12/18/23. Sheet 1 to 5, sheet 2, revised 01/01/24. Move house recalc, sheet 3. Septic draining plan, sheet 4. Design date, sheet 5. Post-construction plan stamped and signed by Richard Hood Land Surveyor, number 35031, and John Landis-Collie, civil professional engineer, number 35101. Building plan, prepared for Dale residence, 379 Monomoskoye Road, Mashpee, Mass., date September 14, 2023, prepared by CES Designs LLC. Revisions date 12/24 preliminary. A0 garage elevations, A1 exterior elevations, A2 exterior elevations, A3 foundation plan, A4 first floor plan, A5 second floor plan. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Condition on the comments submitted by Catherine Laurent, DPW director, dated January 8, 2024. Condition on approval by the Conservation Commission on presentation to the Conservation Commission, with any change in plan resulting from that being resubmitted to the zoning board of appeals. Number seven, and I'm going to go into a little bit more depth, showing all that you did, which I congratulate you on, you know, all that you did to bring this to fruition. The board finds that the application as submitted will not result in a detriment to the neighborhood, that there are no new non-conformities being created, that there is adequate parking. Given the density of the site is unchanged, the project would not result in an impact to the surface or groundwater quality that exceeds what exists today. Wildlife habitat will be improved by the removal of existing invasive species and substantial mitigation plantings. There will be no detriment to traffic flow or traffic safety, waterways, fisheries, and fisheries given the density of the site is not proposed to increase. The proposed replacement dwelling and barn is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the request for special permit can thus be approved. I will add to that, that the benefits asserted by the applicant relative to utilizing the area within the foundation walls to increase flood storage capacity and adds to the proposed replacement dwelling and barn being not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and this should be approved.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
You did state in that motion that any changes to the plan, I think in the same paragraph, I'm concerned.
I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well done, sir.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Good job.
Okay. Documents. We haven't seen this very much time. She knows. Oh, I get to sign a plan.
Works well one day.
So...
What difference?
Four, I wrote 23. Well, that's, this is, so this is junk, this is good, I think.
I don't know, last one.
And I just...
Tina Schuman.
That's a good one.
Tina Schuman. It's paper everywhere.
There's no comments in it. Oh, there is.
Yeah, there is.
What do we, Ashamet Avenue? Boy, a lot of paperwork there, you know? Say hi. All right, did we, you know?
Was that me or you?
That was you.
That was me.
That was you.
I did a good job.
You did a great job, didn't we?
So I think, Brad, you're up next, I think, correct? And I, did I, so I went George Charlie, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the next one will be the four regular members and you, Brad. Okay, so that being said, Charlie, would you read for Tina Schuman into the record?
Okay, the next on our list is 14 Ashamet Avenue. Owner, Joseph T. Marino, requests a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction of a dormer over an existing garage and a deck addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 49, parcel 104, Mashpee, Mass. The board issued and put variance in 2003 from the side lot line for the existing 24 foot by 34 foot garage. The subject lot is pre-existing non-conforming, consisting of 11,250 square feet of land where 80,000 square feet is required. The board will determine if the proposed deck addition and dormer alteration on the northwest corner of the existing garage will be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure or use to the neighborhood, and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking as may be required.
Thank you. If you could state your name and your reason for being here.
My name is Glenn Fazino, and I am here representing Mr. Marino.
As the developer, builder?
I am a contractor.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. So Mr. Marino is proposing a dormer addition above his garage to accommodate a bedroom and a bathroom with a small deck with a set of stairs for egress out the back of the garage.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's your suite, that's great.
On obviously a pre-existing garage that had to get a variance when it was built several years ago.
So the garage exists, and you're doing this to an existing garage?
Correct.
All right, so letters from agencies, Charlie, please?
Yeah, we do. We have conservation, 14 Ashamet Avenue, no wetlands jurisdiction. Okay? And then Board of Health comments received 12/28/23, Ashamet Avenue. Board of Health, plan shows habitable space above garage. Septic is built for four bedrooms. This would add a fifth bedroom. The Board of Health cannot approve. An existing floor plan will need to be submitted of the existing house, 1994, permit is for a four-bedroom house. 2002 garage plan shows unfinished storage space over garage. Think, and there was Catherine Laurent on 18, 2004, town road, stormwater runs into the road at minimum approval condition on gutters, downsides, dry wells on garage for roof runoff.
About Evan? And let me just see if I can find it in this.
Did you have it?
Yeah, it's way back.
Way out of order, right?
Okay.
Want me to read it?
Go ahead.
Okay, it's a relatively short, I'll read his review.
Go ahead.
Subject property is improved with a lawful... Subject property is improved with a lawful pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling off of Ashamet Avenue near Johns Pond. The lot contains eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet of upland area, where eighty thousand square feet is required. All setbacks currently conform with the exception of the side setback to the existing garage, which is lawfully pre-existing due to the issuance of the variance by the Board of Appeals. The applicant proposes to alter the pre-existing non-conforming structure by building to the rear of the garage a deck and set of stairs, presumably to facilitate a second means of egress for habitable living space above the garage. This alteration is minor in nature, however, the applicant need be aware that according to the Board of Health, no bedrooms can be added to the property without an upgrade of the septic system on site. Considering your deliberations, the following pre-existing non-conformities, one, minimum lot area, two, minimum frontage, three, side yard setback, although the issuance of the variance effectively changes the required dimensional criteria for this particular lot. Recommendation, planning department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the board can grant a written finding. If any bedroom is to be added above the garage, then the septic system must be upgraded at the appropriate time.
That, not, I know where you, anything else? David, what are your thoughts?
How was, I'm, how we got a second egress? Because it seems like where the pocket door going into the garage, they're going into the proposed bathroom, is that the entrance to the house?
It is, correct.
So this was part of the house, and now it seems to be cut off. All right, so how was that a second egress? The only way out of the house is through the bathroom?
Or out the slider down the set of stairs.
How are we gonna deal with the bedroom?
So the bedroom on the pre-existing home only has two bedrooms in it. It does not have four bedrooms in the pre-existing home. It has only two bedrooms. The house has been assessed recently. An assessor has walked through the home and has made all those calculations.
But what you're gonna have to do is reach out to Board of Health, make sure they go to that, your house existing, the house existing as it is, confirm how many bedrooms are there, okay?
Okay.
It's a bedroom count, you know, inspection. At that point in time, they'll be able to tell you whether you can add one or not under your existing conditions.
Okay.
So that's a big one, because this board is historically, we are on record now from the Board of Health saying, we got a problem. So we have to deal with that.
And the counter, the counter is full height, counter, no sink, what is it?
There's no, the only place there's a sink is in the bathroom area.
Okay. All right, so it seems like to me, it's kind of cut off from, if you're in the bathroom, you're gonna lock that pocket door. All right, so, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's flow to the, to the original house. So it seems like it's cut off, the main entrance to the home would be through the stairs in the back, am I right?
Well, you can, either you enter through the bathroom from the main house, or I add a door next to the bathroom.
That would work. Can you do that?
I can, yes.
I think that would be a better move.
Can that be handled before certainly he makes the application for a permit?
I mean, you don't need a second egress as it stands, because it doesn't have a kitchen.
Correct.
If it had a kitchen, it would be, it would be an ADU.
It's just a separate bedroom.
You would need to get a separate egress, and that wouldn't work with the current plan. Even, even if you did that door, it would, I would have to put it, make it a deed restriction, but I think the doors are a wise decision.
Correct. We'll put it, we'll pop a door on the backside of the bedroom there, the bathroom, egress into the home.
And I, I, you know, we can't, we can't be out in the kitchen.
No, there's no kitchen.
Unless, unless we.
So Charlie, you're hearing this conversation, right? No kitchen?
It's a bathroom and a bedroom.
Understood.
So I'd like to go to the, go to the audience, if I may, anyone in the audience have input in reference to this application? Seeing none. So it seems to me we have a Board of Health issue, because right now the Board of Health is, is not aware as to how many bedrooms exist, and they feel that there could be an additional, there is certainly a bedroom in the garage, so they're concerned. So somehow we've got to alleviate that letter that we are interested from the Board of Health.
Okay, so I have to have the Board of Health come and do a walk-through of the home?
Whatever they want to do, I'm not speaking for them, but that letter that we are on record stating that, that says that there's more than four bedrooms out there, you only have a four-bedroom leach field, we have an issue, because that has to be retracted so that this board is satisfied with the Board of Health.
So obviously I need a continuance.
That is certainly up to you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Or you can ask us to vote.
I would like a continuance, please.
There you go. So, Mary Ann, what would be satisfactory to this board, because we, we don't want to be spending, you know, a sleepy, sleepy night here on this desk? You know? February? February what?
Fourteenth.
So you were asking, you were asking for an extension until February fourteenth, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Charlie, can I get a motion in reference to that request?
A motion relative to fourteen Ashamet Avenue, that the hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals be continued to February fourteenth, 2024, for resolution.
Can I just make one statement, sir?
Yes, sir.
During this time between now and then, I'd recommend two things, Board of Health, and at least sit down with David to make sure he's happy.
Yes, sir.
Because you don't want him, you don't want to be in a position where you're adding stairs and he's not gonna differ.
I'm gonna add the door like we spoke, and I'll come meet with you, I'll revise the plan.
That's between you and him. All right, so we have a motion, a second on that, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So the next one will be for, oh, you're getting, oh, but you're still sitting. Okay. All right, we'll, we'll slow it down a bit. No, that was just extended. All right, so it'll be the four regular members?
No.
Yeah, no, he's not stepping down.
The next one is, is a request for an extension.
Oh. Oh, so you know what? Then why don't we just say the three existing members and you two right now, so we can get this thing done?
Sure.
Sheffield Place, right?
So why don't you read it into the record, please, Charlie?
Yep, there's a.
Well, I'll explain to John when he comes back. It'll be the three here and you two. That means George and Charlie.
A letter from.
Do you need to read it first?
You need to read the, read this in first.
Yeah, you need to read the actual.
I'll read the actual.
Yep.
Five Sheffield Place owners Christopher P. Funk and Donna M. Funk request a variance under 17431 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 200-square-foot shed on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 29, parcel 150, Mashpee, Mass. The shed in question is unlawfully pre-existing, excuse me, and is eleven feet from the property line, where fifteen feet is required. The board will determine if there is a hardship resulting from a unique lot shape, topographical or soil condition that justifies the requested relief pursuant to Mash General Laws 40A. And we have a letter from Donna Funk, dated January 3rd, 2024, to Mary Ann. As per our conversation this afternoon, I'm respectfully requesting a continuation of the zoning board meeting regarding our property at Five Sheffield Place Mashpee. My husband will be out of town on business, and I would be very much prefer if he comes with me to hear firsthand how the meeting goes. He will be available for the February 14th, 2024 zoning board meeting. Thank you, Donna Funk.
Motion to accept the letter and the extension until February 14th, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I guess why don't we just wait for Jonathan referenced approval of minutes, and I'm sure he'll be here in a minute, and then we'll talk about the criteria for the checklist review. Checklist review? Did, so did the board?
You got some.
Oh, I'm, let me.
Did I throw that out?
Well, so that, that's just an extension, though. The last one was just an extension, so I don't, I don't go to the public. All right, so we, Jonathan, we're at, that was just an extension, so we went forward and met Jonathan. So we're at approved minutes for December 13th, 2023. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so has this board reviewed the criteria for the checklist? If you haven't, then could you please, only because Evan updated it, it's ready for a vote by the board upon your review and acceptance? So we're probably gonna have to do it at the next meeting, then, Mary Ann.
Probably this, right?
Yeah. So Evan did it, input, yes, input from myself, Evan formulated, good process. I, I envision more after this, such as criteria for submittal. So there's more that's coming down the pike, but that right there will help applicants and will help Mary Ann to be in a position where we can be streamlined and efficient.
And help us make good decisions.
Uh, yeah, there you go. And so, those of you that haven't read it, please read it, and please give me comments.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to, at the next meeting, approve it or disapprove it? I guess vote on it, one way or another. I'm hoping that you'll approve it.
Fair enough.
And.
So, just a quick question.
Sure.
The, this appears to be what, eight, nine, 10, 12 pages?
Of which that includes written findings, that's all the process, not just one.
Yeah, there are different forms in here.
Yes.
Okay.
For different applications.
Is it a big upgrade from the old one?
Well, so there is no old one, technically.
There's three, three different, there's a variance, a written finding, and a special permit.
In there.
And they were all one page, maybe?
Two.
They're two pages, little more detailed than the last application type.
But correct me if I'm wrong right now, Mary Ann, we do not have guidelines when someone comes in, I mean, strict, here it is.
The checklist is part of.
Yeah, there are three.
The application.
Written findings, special.
It's included. The checklist is included.
Is this helpful to you?
Yes, yes.
Better than it was, right?
Yes.
Anything that you feel that's left out of here?
Uh.
That you would like to see added, or?
There's just one page that needs to be, for the GIS coordinator and the tax.
And it's not in here and it should be?
Yes.
No, we should include it then, yeah.
Yep.
Is there anything in here that is repetitive, needs to be taken out?
Um, it might be, I gotta, that's why it's in a draft form, but, yeah, we probably need to look at it a little bit more detail on that, but.
Because I can look at this, it doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, no, I get it, it's.
Mary Ann's the one that's gotta tell us.
Oh, without a doubt. And so Mary Ann and myself kicked it around, and then Evan chose to kick it around, and so, and then I shared it with the board, and then we kicked it around with the board, and, and so there's, there's another bite at this, that this apple, right, which is criteria for the application, such as, are you gonna do 25-year storm drainage studies? All that stuff will be coming down the pike. I don't have an engineer that's working with me to tell me that, so I'm gonna do it myself. I, I can do it, I've been to enough communities where I know what those criteria should be, in my opinion. I'll submit that to the board, and you can take a look at that. So this is really, this is a process, let me explain what we're trying to do. What's been historically happening is applicants come in and see our town clerk, and they file with the town clerk an application, in many cases it's not complete. Clock starts ticking. Mary Ann gets under the gun. She's like, I've got, we've got to make a decision, and the application isn't complete. I went down and met with the town clerk, and I said, the way that this should be is, a submittal should be given to Mary Ann, Mary Ann signs off on it, gives it to the town clerk, and the clock starts ticking. If you don't get a sign off from Mary Ann, the clock doesn't tick, and the application isn't handed in.
Right.
And so, but we have to know, and then the discussion was, so we need a basis for an application, so complete or incomplete. So an applicant has that and says, Mary Ann says, it's not complete. See this piece of paper? It's not complete.
I can't sign it until it's complete.
Exactly. And then she's no longer under the gun.
Totally agree.
There you go. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
There you go.
When you're comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Exactly.
Where everybody's comfortable.
Because I can look at this, and I don't know what's missing, and.
Well, but take a look at it anyway, I would, I mean, unless you want to vote on it now, it's up to you, I just want to.
No, no, I think we should.
Take a look at it.
I wanna wait, I wanna make sure Mary Ann is completely.
It's a big gun, right? So take a look at it, make sure everything's good. My goal is to just get it instituted, so I can go, sit down with town clerk, and say, process instituted, she controls applications.
Absolutely.
Done.
Totally agree.
Mary Ann had a question for us relative to conservation.
Thank you.
That's something that we could.
Sure.
Easily do tonight.
Let's do it. Yeah. That's been, so the question that Mary Ann has is, we've been kicking around with conservation from, for the last year or two, and that question is, correct me if I'm wrong, who comes first? And the way I was able to deal, I thought I dealt with that, is because I've been going round and round with conservation and that, when the motions are made that any changes to these plans, I'm motivating an applicant to go to conservation first, because if you take a shrub out, and I've said it publicly, you're coming back to this board, and you may have to open up a new public hearing. I have not met with any from, anyone from conservation to sit down and say, I think we should be last, but I believe we should.
This has been going on for 15 years.
Oh, it's crazy.
I, I agree.
Since the day I walked in here, 20 years ago.
Yeah, so I think the way we've been handling, you see, I mean, we, we take every individual case, sometimes we say you gotta go to conservation first, but I think Drew has been handling it well, and that, as you read tonight, Charlie.
That was a good one.
Uh, you know, he hasn't come to us yet, but the applicant hasn't come to us, but I feel confident it's gonna be a good, you know, goodness, a good application in that he's gonna improve the situation.
If we get that kind of narrative from Drew, I don't have a real issue.
We should, we should not have to put pressure on conservation. The applicant is the one that needs to put pressure on conservation to get my hearing held.
Understood.
And that does, this does.
But I think Drew was very helpful in the way he hit.
Yeah, I thought that was the one. Conservation, it never goes forward. It may deny it.
Right.
So I agree. I think it's working a little bit better, and I'm hoping that it'll even improve more.
Agreed.
Agreed.
And wasn't there something else?
Yes, the public hearing notices.
Oh, yeah.
Are they a little bit too detailed? Or can I?
Doesn't bother, they're very detailed, it doesn't bother me at all.
Me neither.
So I think, and that's because Evan has been doing them, right? So Evan has been spending his time and effort, because he's now overseeing all departments as far as construction or, what's his new title?
Community.
Development.
Community development.
There you go. So that being said, he's helping out on many, many levels, and, and so he's helping in reference to that. And so, can be a little wordy. I think it's my attitude, and I'm not Mary Ann, I don't deal with people on the straight up when they come in and make an application, a little bit more wordy is probably better than less, but that's up to Mary Ann. That's your call.
I have no issues.
If it's a problem.
It's a problem for you, I have an issue.
Yeah, so tell us if it's a problem for you, what that problem is, so that, see if we can fix it.
Well, the details of it being submitted to the board, I think, is great. However, when I'm, time constraints to get it advertised in the paper is causing me to back up a little bit on other applications, so I'd rather.
Because of typing, from whatever.
Just, right.
Just putting all the information on it, make sure it's correct.
And it's all, well, not so much the typing part, it's just meeting.
What, what would you prefer, Mary Ann?
I would rather it be to the minimum.
Why don't, why don't you and I, you and I and Evan sit down, Dave wants to get a little, and we'll have a conversation with Evan and see how we can streamline it a bit.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't need to make your job any harder.
No. Definitely not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So now that being said, there's a couple of, so one other thing I think we need to discuss also, um, what was it? There was something else that we were gonna discuss.
Perhaps, I'm meeting about.
Oh, yes. So I have a question of the board, and that is the following. Sometimes when I hear an applicant come in, or, say Drew says, we have a, or we read something concerning, the applicant received a negative determination of applicability.
Yeah, right. No, you explained that.
You did a good job.
But, but I think there are, there are several things that we could sit down as a board and discuss. And I, I could present to you and we could bring other people in so that this board could have a little bit of a learning curve here in reference to some of these things.
Love it.
And help us all, because there's things that I could learn in reference to some of this stuff. I think we, we could sit down and have a little session, whenever it may be, whether it be after the next meeting, before the next, for like 10, 15 minutes.
I agree.
I, I think from a lot coverage standpoint, from, from conservation, filing of a notice intent, an order of conditions, what a local bylaw means, all these types of things, I think we need to better understand some of these things. And I think a 15-minute seminar, if you want to call it that, to discuss these various things would help us all.
Can we do that?
I think we have been open, a public advertised open meeting because there's going to be more than possibly three of us, or at least three of us, so that's a meeting. So if that's the case, why don't we just spend, instead of coming at seven o'clock, let's start at 6:30, one time, 6:15.
How about six o'clock, come at five thirty?
And just a list of questions. You know, I think it's important that we all strive to get a little bit better in reference to some of these things, so that we know more than we know today.
My question, Ron, was, do we have to do that in an open meeting?
I think we do.
I do too.
Yes, and I think it's important that we do. And I, I think, I think it's important, so if someone ever questions us if we're sitting here, we're not going to cover all bases, but every, but we can cover some, some bases, right? And maybe we do it a couple times a year or once a month or something, I don't.
But we've got, we've got variance, special permit, written findings, we've got, those are the three areas people come before us.
Right.
There's a process with each of them that we have to be aware of.
Correct, and but I specifically was listening attentively when we were talking about some conservation issues. And I think the board needs to understand some more conservation issues, some more floodplain issues. We can hear from David about floodplain. We're talking about different, different elevation, different plains. We should talk, David's very knowledgeable about floodplains. We should talk to him about, David should expand, expel to us the knowledge that he has about floodplains and some other things so that we start to understand these things that we should know. We're making these decisions, we should know some of these things.
Good.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
The good thing is when the people who are before us presenting applications for change also know what we know in terms of what's required to happen. Many don't.
Correct.
But.
As was.
And I'd like to like present to the board like some drainage issues, some various things of why I'm so concerned about some of these drainage things that come in front of this board. I'm very concerned about that because that's one of our key aspects and this is something that I deal with on a daily basis, right? So the bottom line is I think we should spend 15, 20 minutes. Yes, sir?
I want to go back to Evan's proposal there. Is on it. Structure coverage, lot coverage.
So he and I.
Is all that on there?
He and I had a little disagreement, a disagreement. He feels, and I may be wrong, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, he feels that lot coverage pre and pre, before and after, excluding and excluding, excluding and including is adequate. I'm saying that there should be structure coverage in that whole process, which has nothing to do with zoning. And he, he disagrees with me.
I agree with you. That makes it simple for people to understand.
I said to him, it is not a zoning issue, it is a, it is knowledge for the board to make a decision on whether it's more detrimental or not. Just think, how do you make a decision whether it's more detrimental or not, whether you're taking a house that's going from this to that or this to this?
You say it's a hundred percent to a hundred percent. If you don't include structure.
So I closed the discussion by saying to him, I win, basically. So the bottom line is we're going to do structure coverage before and after, we're going to do lot coverage before and after.
Yeah.
Period.
Well, we don't know if the house is getting any thicker or.
Yeah, I, I, we have to do it.